All right, the Bothell City Council is now back in session and we are going to start with AB 16 dash, oh, is this the right one? Yeah, 16 dash 100. Study session to provide council with a status report on the special collaborative engagement process regarding potential plan and code amendments to the Fitzgerald 35th Southeast and Canyon Creek 39th Southeast Subarea Plans in the Bothell Municipal Code Chapters 12.50 and 12.52. And Mr. Burnett and Mr. Blackburn are here to provide a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we have scheduled a briefing for the council on the progress with the Fitzgerald Subarea Planning. Tonight, there are two presentations. One will cover the collaborative and consensus building process that was engaged with the stakeholders. Second one will cover best available science and the pathways to future code amendments for the area. Because the consultants have been working diligently on this project and we've got them captured for a good period of time tonight, we appreciate the council extending the time period so that we can cover all of this material. I want to thank Bruce Blackburn on our staff who's been leading this project and Ben Burke with Parametrics who's been preparing the technical memorandums and some of the material that you're going to receive tonight. And lastly, Kirsten Green with Cogan Owens &amp; Green. And who could be, what a better surname than Kristen Green for this project. So I'll turn the time over to Kirsten to cover the three workshops that we had with the stakeholders. And then we'll, there may be some question and answers on that process. After that, we'll dive into best available science with Ben Burke, Parametrics. Thank you. Oh, I should say also, I forgot where we are in the process. We have a public hearing scheduled for June 21st next week and the same place, the same And as we go into that public hearing, we'll open it up for conversation with the stakeholders. Also, there's a second meeting scheduled for June 28th to continue that public hearing, should we need that time. And finally, come back to the city council on July 19th with a resolution that would outline the steps that we take to amend the code to affect the changes. And then lastly, in October, we should have final code language for the council to adopt with this year's comprehensive plan and code amendment process. So we're on schedule. This is the time where we're seeking further direction from the council. I know the council's been engaged with a number of the property owners, a number of the stakeholder groups in the past. We want to make sure that we're on track, gauge the pathways that we're headed towards. So I'll turn the time over to Kirsten.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been a privilege to be here for three meetings. This is my fourth. Again, my name is Kirsten Green. I'm managing principal of a small but mighty consulting firm headquartered out of Portland, Oregon. We do comprehensive planning for cities and counties. And one of my passions and specialties is community engagement and facilitation. So we are very pleased to be selected to assist your community in this process. I was assisted and teamed with on this process by Nadine Appenbrink, who did the keypad polling. You'll see the results of those tonight, but she wasn't able to be here with me tonight. So I'm delivering that message and the results to you. And I'm pleased to see several participants in the process here listening as well. So our assignment we received about six weeks ago was to help plan and facilitate public engagement meetings for the Fitzgerald Subarea. Our work was to align with the technical work. You'll see a preview of that tonight underway by city staff and the Parametrics environmental consulting team. Our task was to include and engage all perspectives in crafting land use and regulatory solutions for the Fitzgerald Subarea. And we did have participation, good participation, solid participation all the way through by property owners, developers, and environmentally concerned stakeholders who don't own property in the area. One of the polling questions we asked at the first meeting was how folks were connected to the study area. And you can see that considerable number of people both affiliate with being a property owner and environmental steward. So it's, we try and refrain from siloing people into one position or another. Prior to the first meeting, I interviewed six stakeholders, two from each of those categories, and appreciated their time on the phone with me. And it became clear that there's, you know, there is a middle path here. And I know staff is prepared to work diligently towards it. So our process were these three work sessions. At the beginning, we thought it would just be two, but it really is. There's so much ground to cover. So May 12th, May 26th, and June 9th. May 12th dealt with the project goals and the updates that would be undertaken by Parametrics for best available science and low impact development techniques. Two weeks later, on May 26th, these were all Thursdays, we considered a range of solutions that might be appropriate for the Fitzgerald Subarea. We probably tried to pack too much into that meeting. You can see where there were three topics in that meeting, and it was a two-hour meeting. Application of low-impact development techniques, both forest equivalent and not forest equivalent. And I know you've heard a presentation on that in April from Parametrics. Those are very technical terms with great weight in terms of environmental regulation. So just getting everyone on the same page. Discussing stakeholders' perspective on how to apply regulatory strategies. So from a policy and code perspective, we'll get into that a little bit more because you do have choice. And then presentation, we were privileged to have a presentation by Tom Campbell from Clearwater Commons in Snohomish County, who is a developer that used aggressive low-impact development techniques to build a series of townhomes just outside Bothell. And then on June 9th, just last week, last Thursday, we reviewed and had a, you know, our first discussion on a full range of solutions, from a prescriptive to a more demonstrative approach, which we'll get into tonight. So I mentioned our first meeting was setting the context. Parametrics had done just their first sweep of updating their 2006 study with understanding basically had conditions change in the study area. They'd be best to answer those from a hydrologic, forest cover, and impervious service perspective. But from what I understand, things, conditions haven't changed that much since 2006. They reviewed with us, as they had done with you in April, the different low-impact development tools so that participants were ready to work with us to apply them in the second meeting. On May 26th, we reviewed these low-impact development tools and confirmed that the suite of tools really is valid. It's more, the question will be how to apply them in a regulatory context. So in the upper right, as one of the breakout rooms, we looked at a sample application as applied to the landscape in the Fitzgerald Subarea. This was a challenging exercise for participants, and not all tables chose to partake in it because in one case, they just preferred to have discussion with each other. But really, what the truth is, is that the context varies so greatly from property to property to sub basin to sub basin within the study area, it's hard to generalize. So we made some progress sort of understanding the application of the tools in some of the tables, but not the others, and that is fine. The question there in the middle on the polling, actually, let me take the image on the right there with the scale. So we were getting into the second meeting on where should we land as a community on prescriptive or quantifiable standards that protect the resources or leaning more towards a demonstrative or creative approach such as was taken in Clearwater Commons and Snohomish County Regulations. So there's a whole scale there, and we're exploring that with participants. At the end of the evening, we polled, and you can see that, you know, consensus is difficult in this arena. But, you know, more than anything, people do want some flexibility. There's definitely, I would say, leaning towards clear requirements, but allowing the flexibility. So you'll hear about these pathways in just a bit from Mr. Burke. On our final meeting last Thursday, Ben, and you'll hear from him in just a moment, reviewed this range of solution, these four potential pathways, ranging from a very prescriptive to prescriptive approaches over to demonstrative and a hybrid approach. We found that the associated regulatory context that you have in your city already is critical, and those shouldn't be separated. So your existing critical areas regulation, it's all part of a package. I think we err together in thinking of low-impact development and stormwater standards separately from your existing, your other existing regulations. So going forth, I know that staff is mindful of taking them forward in a package of regulatory protections for the resources intended to also provide certainty for developers. So in all of our meetings, we had combination of presentation, discussion, as I mentioned, keypad polling, and the ability to complete comment forums for those that were comfortable with written word than speaking in a forum. All those results will be presented to you, I believe, in your packet for the May 21st hearing. We've delivered our report to staff in draft form. So the shared goal from the process is to, you know, craft local regulations and standards that are informed by best available science and BMPs or best management practices for low-impact development that satisfy legal requirements. And we know that you're dealing with a nesting of state, citywide, critical areas, for example, and subarea protections. And if you, you know, we continue to consider them as a nesting of regulatory protections that allow some certainty for developers. We think you'll find a legal strategy that will be held by the Growth Management Hearings Board. Whoopsie. Sorry, I'm going to just back up there. So some of the key findings, and I'll turn the presentation over to the pathways, which really is the meat of the matter. Property owners want certainty. The development community wants clarity. And the environmental community representatives want to participate in a set of solutions that both protect the resource and allow some development. The regulatory context needs to be upfront and better understood, as I mentioned. So the critical area regulations, there's the mortgaging, stormwater, and low-impact development guidance you're needing to update for your NPDES permits. That's a factor. You obviously have the GMA regulatory framework. Your existing overlay protections for Fitzgerald, whether they stay or go, is actually an option to you. You can repackage them differently. You'll hear from Ben. And then from here, Tom mentioned some of the path forward, but they'll be reviewing, doing the final best available science review and the gap analysis based on your feedback tonight and your direction to staff tonight, staff and consultants tonight. Areas of agreement, I mentioned, just to recap here, folks want both preservation and development. No one's saying that this area should be untouched, but it, you know, ideally, you know, obviously needs to protect the resources of North Creek. Conditions vary widely across the subareas, I mentioned. Zone 1 is a particular area of concern. I'm sure you've heard from property owners in that area. It's my understanding, and Ben would be better to answer this, but because Coal Creek eventually is a tributary of North Creek as well, they're considered both in the same hydrologic context. So we haven't yet been able to break out a different set of solutions for Zone 1. The pathway options, we've heard from the polling in the last meeting, the pathway options are worth carrying forward. More than anything, though, folks needed more information to really weigh in on those There's one, you already have this solution enabled in the overlay code, but folks did raise the concept of sending and receiving areas or transfer development rights within the city, and that's something that could be revisited as the package goes forward. Certainly, we'd take some additional legal work to make it fully enabled. So as you move forward, my parting recommendations would be to contemplate how you do continued engagement and consultation. As public engagement professionals, we know there's a full range. Public hearings are one way, and we know you'll do those. Participants really did seem to want the ability to talk to one another more, so you might consider open houses or a task force or advisory committee process to help staff, you know, to assist staff and help proof the concept as you move towards October. And participants are ready, certainly property owners are ready, and I would encourage you to just keep up the pace. You've got an excellent staff team working with you here. Thank you. So with that, if I may, unless there's questions, I turn it over to Mr. Burke.
Yeah, please do. Good evening. My name is Ben Burke. I'm a biologist with Parametrics. Parametrics was brought on initially to assist staff to look at low-impact development options and the best available science nexus for the particular project. And this was back in October. At that point in time, we were primarily looking at the process that had gone to date and then was remanded by the Growth Management Hearings Board. I got a lot of, out of the public engagement process, and I think, did I get it all up? It's not up on the screen. Oh, there you go. One of the things that, again, I kind of want to highlight is we really did listen to input that we got from the public. And as we went through the process, I think our viewpoint expanded a bit. And so what you're seeing in front of you today is largely the outcome of that process. It wasn't what we initially planned coming into the project, but it's sort of where we are today, based in a large part in the feedback that we heard from citizens about how to deal with some of the challenges related to the regulations and particularly that one slide that shows the overlapping and nesting of the state requirements, the cities' citywide requirements, and then the application of additional regulations through the overlay, the Fitzgerald overlay. So what we talked about during the first two meetings was sort of trying to facilitate discussions on what was the preferred approach by the range of participants. And we identified, and I believe this was identified, I wasn't at the April meeting, but there's basically two ranges on either side. One is to go with a complete prescriptive regulatory approach, where you say, these are the standards, and you meet them, and you get your project approved. The other one, on the other side of the spectrum, is what they call the demonstrative approach, where you have standards or performance standards, and then you require the applicants to show how their projects meet those standards. So those are sort of on the two ranges. After the second public involvement meeting, people were asking for some more clarity and some more tools. So we put our heads together with staff and attempted to sort of package these up as examples of how this could be, these could be approached. And so we're calling these pathways, so pathways to approval or pathways to a solution. And we listened to what the citizens were telling us, which we heard earlier today, and we put together sort of these packages. And I want to point out that they are not singular elements in and of themselves. These are ranges, still ranges of options, but in order to kind of package these together to allow more focused discussion during the third meeting, we grouped them. And those decisions on how to group them were largely sort of professional opinion by Paramex staff in consultation with city staff. We had a little workshop, and we went ahead and put those together. So I want to show is that this is not necessarily a top-down, this is the way you have to do it. These are examples that describe a range of options. And what we're looking for from council is direction on which one or more of these you want to move forward so that we can go ahead and get into sort of the meat of the best of all science review and code development. So I guess that is the basis of this particular discussion tonight, is presenting these options and then, I think, on the next meeting, asking for feedback from council about which, if there is a preference, which one or more combinations of them you would like to see moving forward. So I'm going to go ahead now, and I know this is a big table, to kind of go through, and this is largely going to be a summary of the same presentation that we provided last time. We haven't updated the table based on feedback that we received from the last meeting because we wanted council to kind of get the same information that the citizens got. So this is exactly the same table. It's draft. It even has, you know, a couple typos and some red lines in it, just to let everyone know that. So the first thing we heard when we went through the process was the regulations are very complicated, and I think that's reflected in some of the previous documents and certainly the feedback that the council gave us when they first brought us on. And they wanted, and a lot of citizens who weren't necessarily interested in doing a big subdivision just wanted to know how they could get through the regulatory process to build a house on their lot or do a major remodel or maybe break off an acre or do a large lot subdivision. So that was sort of what we're calling Pathway 1, is sort of for someone who basically wants, you know, to go through and build their one unit on their existing lot or do a large lot subdivision. So we thought, okay, it would be good to see how would we package a combination of, you know, citywide regulations and tweak some of the existing potential overlay language to meet that goal. Bruce, do we have the reference table? Just wanted to point that out. It's on the back of the handout. So just as a side note, there's citations or references, and there's a table on the back that points you to the particular portion of Bothell Municipal Code or another descriptions. And I did that just basically so everyone knows when I talk about the critical areas of regulation specifically what I'm referring to. I understand that that was pretty complicated. We got some feedback that that was too much to take in for the public during the last meeting, and I recognize that fact. But it was very difficult to put together a comprehensive review that doesn't have that level of detail and still go ahead and be accurate and get to the point where I think we're providing information that's sufficient to back up sort of our conclusions and statements. So I just wanted to point that out. So Pathway 1 would be a, could be a prescriptive approach. This would basically would say the city would set standards, and as long as the applicant met those standards, they would have a high chance of approval and get their project built. So we went through the various elements that are in the current Fitzgerald Subarea and how those are regulated, and then we looked at how those also could be regulated under various pathways. So relative to critical areas regulations, and this is consistent across all the pathways, but we wanted to point out, because I think this was sort of missing in some of the original information, is that the current citywide critical areas regulations apply across the subarea. Our best available science review that was done in support of the initial project basically was just a high-level gap analysis of your existing critical areas regulations to see if there were any big holes that we would need to fill on the critical area side through the overlay. And you have a very robust critical areas code that meets more or less all the modern standards. I know there's going to be a small code amendment, but it doesn't look like there's any big holes in your current critical areas regulations. And that's great. That's a really good base to work from. So we're saying that we're, for basic critical areas protection, you can stick with those, and they would apply. Inside the Fitzgerald overlay, as it currently stands, there are, there is a provision for additional wildlife regulations or additional protection. They have, they protect a wildlife corridor specifically. We would say, under this first pathway, that you would be exempt from those particular regulations and that you would meet the protection for wildlife following the critical areas regulations. For site and building standards, in the existing overlay, there's a subsection that focuses some site and building standards. And we would say that if you were following this first pathway, that you would not have any additional regulations, that you would follow the citywide site and building standards and the references provided on the back of the table. Forest cover regulations. This is a particularly, I won't necessarily say contentious, but confusing element. And I want to be clear that in this particular pathway, we would not be proposing a specific additional forest cover regulations. We would be assuming that that would be covered, and I'll talk about this later, through additional regulations. So there wouldn't be necessarily for a large lot development or a low-density development, a particular standard to keep 65% or 50% or 40% of forest cover on that particular site. Effective impervious area standards. For this particular pathway, we would recommend that we don't have a threshold that is different than will be specified in the citywide LID requirements. I also want to point out at this point that one of the big issues with the analysis at this point is we don't have those regulations in front of them. So we're going to presume that those regulations are going to meet the particular level of protection that we're looking for. We have a high confidence in that because they're going to need to mirror the Ecology 2012 Manual, and we know what that entails. We also understand that your staff have been working through a process, and we've gotten some feedback that it looks like the consultant that's been working on that hasn't found any big holes or issues with moving forward on that process. So it's given us a lot of confidence in being able to state that we're anticipating that that those will effectively address that. But we will need to review that before we get to the point of recommending any particular code to you. So the LID stormwater standards, those will be specified in the citywide stormwater standards, and we would assume for this particular pathway, we'd not have any additional protections outside of those for someone that was meeting this particular development scenario. The protection of groundwater and groundwater resources was one of the key provisions in the existing Fitzgerald overlay. That is also one of the elements that are particularly confusing to some of the developers who want to work on there, just because it's not a standard that is commonly seen in other jurisdictions, and it's not a regulation that's in other portions of the city. So we're recognizing that there would be some potential impact to groundwater resources from this kind of development, but we're assuming that they would largely be de minimis because a relatively small portion of that largest site would be developed by an actual building. And I'll talk more about the gap that we would need to fill on that in a minute. Modifications to development regulations. One of the things that I want to make sure that we understand is, in the existing Fitzgerald code, there are provisions that allow the city to modify existing design standards to allow some innovative development techniques like cluster, cluster housing, and some other things that are not generally allowed other places in the city code. However, basically saying through the prescriptive standards, we would not recommend allowing any modifications of development regulations. So you would basically be needing to hit the standard development regulations in the code, and there wouldn't be off-ramp to do that within this particular suite of options that would be included under what we're calling Pathway 1. Similarly, in the existing Fitzgerald stormwater overlay, there are allowances for alternatives to LID standards, and this references your current or soon-to-be-old stormwater provisions. And again, we would say that, no, if you're going to follow this particular pathway, you need to meet the standards that are going to be in the new stormwater requirements, and there wouldn't be an opportunity for deviation. Because again, we want a clear pathway. You would basically follow the rules, and you would get your project reviewed. So we need to recognize, and I'm scrolling down here for the people on the screen, that under all of these scenarios, so we've taken sort of the existing suite of state regulations, the city regulations, and then Fitzgerald regulations and unpacked them, we're going to change potentially the Fitzgerald Subarea regulations and put everything back together. And we want to make sure that there's no gaps that are open, loopholes or things that would allow basically someone to exploit an opportunity in the regulations and be able to get a project approved that doesn't meet the standard for protection. So we would be basically going and doing what we call a gap analysis for all of these. That is a key element of this particular work. And then we would recommend on the backside any additional code revisions or policy direction to fill those particular gaps. That has not happened yet. That needs to happen once we get direction on the particular pathway and we start developing the actual code. However, we wanted to make sure that we are putting options that we do believe have a high chance of success to you. And so the justification basically for this pathway is that it's generally consistent with the original protections on this particular area, which were achieved through your large lot zoning, your R4, 40,000 zoning approach upheld by the Growth Management Hearings Board. We understand that that is not exactly the same, and that we would need to do the gap analysis and probably tweak some other things, but we do think it's materially consistent with the original approach, which was upheld. I've gone ahead and identified some potential gaps. This was largely for the purposes of discussing things with the public, but I do think they also apply here. One of the potential gaps, and this is one of the things that I talked about earlier, is that currently, there is a lack of protection under your current forest practices and tree ordinance or your tree protection requirements for small lots and single-family developments. So this is an example where we would recommend a code change, where we wouldn't necessarily have forest provision requirements. The gap would be then, there isn't the protection for forests, which have been stated as important by the council and various stakeholders. And so we would look to ways to maybe tweak your existing code or include a separate additional regulation in the subarea to close that gap. We haven't gotten to that point yet. We've identified that gap probably exists. There is likely need for a potential mechanism to restrict or limit future subdivisions. So some didn't come in under a large lot subdivision, clear all the trees necessarily, develop the develop the lot and then flip it and then put a small lot subdivision. We would recommend if you did direct us to go ahead in that pathway, that we would look for, for including those sort of mechanisms in your, in your code, either again, through the subarea code or another mechanism, if you direct us to do that way. And again, the last point, the main big gap, which I mentioned before, is we do need to verify the specifics of the 2010 stormwater update to ensure that they meet our level of expectation related to protection. I confident they will. One of the big issues that has come up through this, and we're not necessarily addressing, is the issue of future zoning changes. We know that there's discussions on zoning. And so what we tried to do is develop applications or processes that are largely independent of the underlying zoning. If you, so if you elect to change the zoning, either as part of this process or through another process, that you wouldn't be invalidating all the work that we just did and you're in the same boat again next year or the year after. So when we put these together, we said, is this zoning dependent? And we think that this particular pathway can be applied independent of the zoning revisions. The biggest assumption is that if someone did a subdivision, they, they wouldn't be precluded from doing a large lot subdivision. So even though we, it may be zoned R 5400 or 72 or 96, if someone elected to build at a lower density, this would be an option to them. And as long as the existing code doesn't say you have to build at a higher density, then we believe that this, this option would be consistent with regardless of the underlying zoning. Because this also the highest zoning in this is R 40,000. So reviewing the next ones won't take as long as a lot of the same concepts will be through. Are there any particular questions on this pathway? Before I move forward, I understand it's very complex.
So I just want to let you know, you only have about 10 more minutes.
I got it.
Scheduled, okay.
I can kick it through.
Okay.
The next pathway is what we looked at as a potential prescriptive pathway. So this basically, again, is basically a prescriptive approach, much like not pathway ones, we're not going to have to go through all those elements, but for someone that would be doing a higher density development, so a traditional subdivision or development at a density higher than one unit per acre or on an existing legal lot. So again, this is a prescriptive approach, and I'll just go through and point out where the main differences would be. So the main, the first main difference would be under the forest cover regulations. So in the first approach, we would say you wouldn't have to do anything special for forest cover, assuming we were able to fill some of the gaps that we talked about. For this particular one, and this is kind of a different things, we're not saying that there would be a specific requirement to protect forest for forest sakes, but we would be, we would say that you would be required to protect forest as one of your LID measures, the low impact development stormwater control measures. So basically, and this goes back to some of the technical discussions we have, is that the goal of the whole entire LID program is to replicate the functions of a forest through stormwater treatment mechanisms. So basically we're saying is nothing is better than a forest, than an actual forest. So if you want to meet the simplified pathway, you have to agree that you're going to preserve functioning forest. And there's a note at that on the bottom. And one of the things that, that again, this was a point that my colleague Paul Fett made during the initial one, is that forests don't mean trees. Forest means forest, where you have trees, you have a scrub layer and you have functioning forest soils. So there's a little difference between tree protection, which is a lot of the focus have been on, and forests. So that would be something that we would have to, to talk about that definition and how we would do that. We would, and then in addition to that, we would, we would protect forest covered as it is currently protected, either if it's in a buffer as a critical area, or in this particular case, your current forest practices and tree preservation regulations would apply because it's a higher density development. Effective impervious area, this is always an interesting point of discussion. For this particular one, we would recommend that for a prescriptive pathway, that, that a development have a prescriptive, or excuse me, effective impervious area limit of 20%. That currently is the, the highest limit that's in the current Fitzgerald area, and it also is generally what the basin exists today as an entire basin. Obviously it varies from site to site, but generally the basin has about 20% impervious area. And I'm talking about, I shouldn't say the basin, the portion of the basin within the city that you have control over. The area outside of the city has a little higher impervious surface area, particularly given the new development. This approximates the existing conditions and is also consistent, like I said, with the R 4, 5400A standard that's in the current subarea plan. For the LID standards, we basically would say you, you would meet the LID stormwater standards, but we would require you to, to focus on those that we understand to best mimic forest conditions. And there's a bunch of, of text through, I'm not going to go through every particular line unless you have a particular question, but basically says forests, we're going to require, we're going to require you to preserve the intact forest on your property. For other developable lands, you could either develop those with LID, or you could restore forest conditions. And then you get into existing impervious and proposed impervious service. And then we basically mandate that you would treat those with forest equivalent LID techniques. So they're basically just going to put some brackets on the existing standards, which allow a little bit more range of LID treatments. So we'd be picking a slightly more conservative range. Groundwater, for this particular one, we're going, we would assume that we would, would meet citywide design standards and those would protect groundwater if you met all the stormwater requirements of the LID that I just talked about. Modifications of development regulations, again, we would say, no, you have to meet the current city standards. We wouldn't have anything built into the, into the, the code that would allow deviations. Same with the alternatives to LID. Again, when we get to the best available science screening required, and again, the main presumption that this will meet your best available sta, uh, science standards is that all of the underpinnings I talked about, the critical areas regulations, the stormwater manual, and the, the concepts we're taking from the existing Fitzgerald overlay have already been reviewed and consistent with LID. So. Pathway three, and again, this one should be pretty quick to go through, is basically on the other extreme, the demonstrative method. This basically says, let's set performance standards. And then the developer has the flexibility to, to demonstrate how they're going to meet those. So the main differences with this particular one is the current Fitzgerald suba overlay has a protection for additional wildlife regulations. And we would recommend that you, you basically keep those, and they're not necessarily restrictive regulations, so you, you limit development. It just basically says, you have to show how you're not going to impact wildlife corridors. So since this is a demonstrative approach, we think that is justifiable to keep, to basically say, fine, you show that you're not impacting wildlife and you meet that standard and you're okay. Building and site design would be the city current wide design standards, just like the other three pathways. For the forest cover regulations, we would not have, again, a prescriptive requirement that they have a particular percentage. Instead of requiring forest preservation, it was, would be incentivized as an LID measure, primarily because it's one of the least costly ones. Again, the same protections that in your current code would also apply for fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And again, this would be subject to your current forest practices and forest preservation requirements. For effective impervious service, we're looking at carrying the same standard across. One is just, it's the same standard, one is just meeting it prescriptively and one is meeting it demonstratively. So right now you've got different LID standards based on the underlying zoning. And really the streams and fish and everything don't understand zoning. So we're on, we, we, we're sort of wondering why there were two different standards in there. And we would recommend that not be the case if we go forward with, with either one of these options. For the LID stormwater standards, basically you'd be following the, the current proposed manual with a couple small changes. And we would basically be allowing the full suite of LID or flow control with a couple exceptions. We would basically, the developer would have to show why the LID technique was not practicable before they would be allowed to do an alternative. But, but basically they'd be demonstrating compliance through the range of suites that are currently in the requirements. Groundwater, again, there are groundwater standards and demonstrative standards within the Fitzgerald overlay, keeping consistent with the theme. We would recommend that those also apply under a pathway three scenario, so that it would be up to the developer to demonstrate that they're not impacting groundwater. Again, we would not require any modifications allowed for development standards. One of the things that I do want to point out is under this particular one, there is an option for alternatives to this stormwater. And that would be to develop an ecology approved basin plan or use a regional stormwater facility. So under these scenarios, the city could go together and put together ecology, ecology approved basin plan that talked about other ways you're going to protect surface waters. That is a very complex and costly endeavor, but it is an option. Or the city could come together and develop regional stormwater facilities and allow everyone hook up to it. A lot of other cities have done this. It's obviously a top down kind of approach, but it is an option. Again, we would need the, the gap analysis. And basically the BS screening rationale is exactly the same. It's already based on already approved processes and procedures. There are a couple of gaps with this. One is that we are relying on the demonstrative approach and you, it may warrant revision to the effective impervious surface standards or something to provide a higher level of assurance that we're going to meet the ultimate level of protection that we need. The fourth one, I'm not going to go through in detail, and this basically is, is the work that originally we thought we would be doing, which would be looking at the existing code, going through and changing some of the, the words that we know are confusing to people, modernizing it to review, review, or remove, excuse me, potential conflicts with the existing critical areas regulations and stormwater regulations, and then basically just sort of tightening things up. The same processes, procedures and thresholds would still apply under pathway four that they do in the current regulations. It would just be trying to, again, modernize them and make them a little bit more consistent with existing city, other city requirements, but still keeping the same regulatory process. So I'm assuming you're familiar with that particular process. There's a lot, did I make it in my 10 minutes or was close?
You burned up 43 minutes out of the 45 minutes of the agenda item.
All right.
All right. So from here, you want to hear discussion from council on, or, okay, does council have any questions? Councilmember Amber.
You said the primary feedback was that the regulations are really complicated. So which one of these pathways is least complicated? Because when you're going through it, I'm feeling it's all pretty complicated.
Well, that would be the, the point that, so the outcome would basically be pathways one and two would be the least complicated. They basically say, these are what you need to do to get approval. And it would be in the code. And there's a couple of different ways we can structure the code to talk about that. But, you know, we can make it very clear. The, the option is, is that for, for some folks, that may be very difficult to meet those particular standards and that's, and maximize the amount of development if that's what they want to do on their property. And we figure that's sort of a trade off, whereas if you wanted it clean and simple, you know, you're, you're maybe giving up a little bit of opportunity to develop the entirety to the way you may want, but you're getting a higher degree of certainty that it's going to get approved and go through versus the demonstrative approach, pathway three, which basically, you know, puts the burden of proof largely on the developer. So the certainty factor goes down a little bit. But it would be up to, you know, staff working with us to craft code that was clearer and clear and had clear milestones that we could meet and we could talk about. And that's the thing, if, if this is something that you're interested in doing, that we would do certainly, moving forward and put the focus of our energy in, in developing those sort of clear regulations. And when I say clear, I'd say they'd be clear to the level that, you know, your current development regulations are clear. So to the layman, they might be slightly, they're still regulations. But they'd be largely consistent with the way your existing regulations are structured and worded.
Okay. And then do you have an example of what a performance, how a performance standard would be worded? So if I'm looking at pathway three, and if I look at, for example, additional wildlife regulations, you mentioned that the developer would just be tasked with demonstrating that they had met some performance goal regarding wildlife.
The wording would be exactly, exactly the same that's in the current regulation for that particular element.
Then how does that become demonstrative and not prescriptive if what's in the current?
There are regulations, actually a combination. It has prescriptive elements and it has demonstrative elements. And that's one of the confusing parts is it's sort of combined, it sort of picks different ones. So in some places related to the LID and the, and the standards, it says, you must do this. And then on other sections, it says, but in other areas, you must show us how you're doing other things. And I think that is one, in my opinion, that is why it's, it's confusing, because it's sort of mixing
Both.
Regulatory processes in a way that's not seen in other locations. And it's, it's just unfamiliar. I wouldn't necessarily say it's confusing. I'd say it's unfamiliar and unpredictable. That's my opinion. I'm not a developer.
And then so pathway one, to me, looks like it's kind of like the way the subarea was before, when it was R 40,000. And then it just had to, development just had to adhere to general citywide regulations. Is that sort of what pathway one is?
More or less, yes.
And then pathway two is if they, if say we, the area was zoned like 9600, you said anything that's development greater than one unit per acre. So say it was R 9600, then it would have some additional requirements.
Right. So the, the standard that has been established through a variety of processes and discussions is that the, the natural resources in this area deserve a higher level of protection than granted by the city's development regulations. And that's been sort of upheld in decisions and, and in the, you know, findings of the last ordinance that was remanded. I mean, those were points that were made, councils as they recognize this. So we're sticking with those same presumptions for this particular project. So we have to provide a higher level of regulation than your current code. And so we would generally be doing that under pathway two through the LID overlay requirements. So tightening down the range of options that would be available to, under your regulations and saying, we only want the ones that we are, have the highest confidence will actually produce the same hydrologic effect as, as a forest. And not some of the more out there ones. I mean, there's things like deep well injections and things we're saying are too, too experimental at this point and, and don't have the technology behind it to, to base a regulation on.
But you feel then, in your review of our existing regulation, you could pair out those things that are maybe experimental or maybe too demonstrative?
Yes.
And then?
Yes. And that was primarily the focus of the second meeting we had, was talking about those ranges. And we only, we talked about LID that was, that replicated forest conditions and other LID that was good, but didn't meet that same standard, like impervious pavement and green roofs. Those are all valid and worthy LID techniques, but they don't provide the same level of function as a forest, as some of the other ones, primarily rain gardens and dispersion method, which you need space for.
I'm done with questions.
Anybody else have questions? Deputy Mayor?
So I feel like alternatives to LID storm during, no, sorry, modifications of development regulations. Did I hear you say that none of these pathways would allow for clustering?
That's not necessarily true. So you have already through your development regulations and zoning with the attached zoning designation, allow for that. But there's some provisions in your current code, and you could elect to put these in. We're just saying as a truly demonstrative or truly prescriptive measure, you wouldn't allow modifications. If you elect to do that, we certainly could do that. But like, like driveway standards, I mean, to get a slightly narrower driveway, so you have less pavement, or maybe allowing more, you know, changing the backyard setbacks or something like that, that's when I'm looking at development standards. So there are provisions in the existing Fitzgerald, somebody that says the city shall, you know, consider these and allow exemptions as long as they show that they're, you know, functionally equal, as long as they facilitate the low impact development of it. And it's a little confusing because there's low impact development, construction, and there's low impact development stormwater, current, and there's, both of those are regulated under the current overlay. And we're talking primarily about low, low impact development stormwater techniques when we say LID in the other pathways. So I just want to be clear about that. It's a little confusing. And that's the kind of things we would try to clean up under pathway four, if we did modernize that a little bit.
Okay. And then regarding the pathways, are there, I've heard you throw out numbers, but are there recommended zoning standards for each one? Like is, is the first one, R 9600, are you making those kinds of recommendations?
So they're all, and this is something to point out, so they're, they're, the underlying zoning, these are independent of the underlying zoning. Now.
But you're talking about high, I mean, you, you said things like a large.
It's not, it's not the zoning. So if you had zoning that So if you had zoning that allowed you to do eight lots per acre, but you were choosing to only do one, like, so say you had an existing legal lot on .85 acres, and you just want to build a house. Pathway 1 would allow you to do that without having to hire 10,000 consultants and take four years, or three years, or two years, or whatever that the people are saying the current project takes. So you would be, still the underlying zoning would be the same, but you would be, your developer pulso wouldn't be to that level if you choose, chose to go that direction as a developer or a property owner. You wouldn't be required to do that. So the zoning could be whatever the zoning is under that. The other ones could, and one of the points, so we've kind of tightened, like I said, some of, recommended tightening down some of the opportunities for deviations or tightening down some of the stormwater requirements to provide that extra level of protection. That does presume that you'd be sticking with the current zoning. If you elected to change the zoning to a less dense zoning, so say 96 or 72, there may be an allowance to loosen some of those tightenings because there'd be some more opportunities to do maybe some of the less conservatives LID techniques because you have a little more space to work with on a site. So we could look at that if that happened. But it doesn't have to happen as part of this. If zoning is something you choose to review as a separate path, it wouldn't hold us back in this process. We could still develop code and regulations that would address that. So it wouldn't invalidate that. The current zoning is built, or the current zoning, excuse me, the current overlay is built around the zoning as is today. So if you did change it, it might require a little more tweaking to Pathway 4, but I still think it would apply.
And then of the three, what, which would allow for more dense development?
Probably Pathway 3 would allow for more dense development. It's really hard to say. The standards are the same. So on a site, on a site that didn't have a lot of other encumbrances, Pathway 3 would allow for more dense development. You know, there's no perfect site, and they're just like with critical areas, like you have areas on the backside of buffer that's unbuildable. There may be portions of this, like in the forested areas, or openings in the forest that aren't as practical to develop, and so that may result in slightly less dense development. But that would be really a site-specific issue. On paper, Pathway 3 would allow a higher density because it would be slightly, could be slightly less restrictive on space because you could do other things to meet your stormwater requirements than protect forests, which do take up a certain amount of space.
So do you have a recommendation?
My recommend, and these are not necessarily exclusives. You can direct people to do all of these. I guess, I don't have a, my personal recommendation, because largely this is how the city wants to address this, and I'm not trying to weasel out of these. Each one of these could be done. I think carrying forward Pathway 4, maybe tweaking some of it and changing things would be what I would recommend because, and just because that is most consistent with what has already been upheld by the Growth Management Hearings Board. And my job is to put together regulations and best-of-all-sciences backup documents and other things you need to get a program or regulations to prove that will be upheld. So if you want to deviate from that, that's fine. It doesn't mean we can't also justify those. It just means there may be a little more work, and whenever you change things from unknown, you have a little more uncertainty and there's a little more risk. So probably 4 is the least risky because it's the most like what you have today. Probably 3 is the biggest change from what you have today. 2 is probably relatively close or could be made relatively close. And 1 arguably is already, portions of that are in the code. The existing subarea already exempts certain elements of it from, for single lot development or development of existing lot. It just also then has other requirements that it doesn't exempt you from. And so, you know, you kind of get a couple exemptions, but then you still have to do some of the big pieces. And so we'd recommend making that more clear.
And then we're, last question, I promise. Were these pathways presented to the stakeholders?
This is exactly the same table that was presented, mistakes and all. We gave it to you exactly the way we presented it.
And do we have any information on the reception?
I think the basics, which I'm sure you all feel, is this was an awful lot of information in a short time. I said in the meeting that I think, I was trying to balance the level of detail and specificity with accessibility, and I probably didn't, or succeeded in balancing them to the point where I made everyone unhappy. The people that wanted a lot of detail didn't get it, and the people that wanted maybe a little broader discussion of topics got a little bit more in their face, fire hose-like, than they wanted. And I think that is a valid justification. This is, these are complex issues. One of the reasons we wanted to give you the exact same table was because we wanted to present it again, so people could hear it again. And then, you know, we recommend that we would, you know, follow these same things toward as consistent as we can. But it was a lot to take in. I do think the feedback was it was very complex, and a lot of people want to see the devil's in the details, you know, what the details are. And it was very hard, some of the feedback for, you know, I'm going to come up here and for people to understand with the reference table in the back because they didn't have access to that at the meeting, but, you know, there's perhaps 60 pages of development regulations that are referenced, and so that was a challenge to put together in a public process that had a wide range of stakeholders. Did you want to add something to that?
The only thing I would add is from the second meeting, in this, in your packet and in the record, where we polled on the range of regulatory strategies, the majority of folks, well, 34% would like, well, actually, let me just do the math here, 42% of those that participated would favor clear requirements, some more on the prescriptive side. 34% favor having both options, so the pathways here, so, you know, let them do prescriptive or pathways one or two, but then opt in to a more demonstrative approach if they wish. So you could create a code that does preserve both options. And then 10% less, prefer just the creative approach. So that's probably too risky for most. People would like some sort of safe harbor. And another question we asked was, if you were to develop property in the area, would you be more likely to choose to follow clear requirements, choose a more creative approach? Are not sure. 46% against said they prefer clear requirements. 32% said they would like a more creative approach and be allowed to demonstrate compliance. And 21, we're not sure. But again, that was still in the abstract before they saw the pathways before you.
Okay. Sorry, I lied. One last question. Pathway 4, is that demonstrative or prescriptive?
It's actually, it would be a combination. It would follow, and I'm, and there's four pathways here at extreme, so we've got the simplified way, basically a more complete prescriptive, a more complete demonstrative, and largely what you have today. It's still a range. I mean, we can certainly look to say, well, I like, you know, the demonstrative approach, but I'm just uncomfortable with this one element. How would you plug that in? So maybe for like the next meeting, if you said, well, that's the kind of direction we're looking for, because there is that ability to do so. And then we, again, compact everything back down, look at how it reads, you know, run through some development scenarios, and then we look at some of the potential gaps, and then how we would fill those, and then you can decide whether you want to do that. Citywide regulations, some of it might just be a word or two here or there, whether you do it through the overlay, so it would only apply to these areas, or whether or not you could also do some, you know, policy things like direct the city to develop director's rules that would address particular elements. That would be sort of a non-regulatory pathway, but would still have the process of rulemaking.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Sure. Any else, sir?
Any other questions?
Comment?
Or a comment, sure.
Thank you. I am, thanks for all this. It is a lot of, a lot of information. I'm kind of in having the feeling that if there was a way to take the project that the developer had and guide them to what is the most appropriate pathway for their project, you know, like you say, Pathway 1, the simple, I got an acre lot I want to build a home on, well, hey, Pathway 1, that's the one you want. Or, and then somebody else comes in, they've got a more dense project, but they really like hard and fast rules, well, great, you know, I like Pathway 2. And somebody wants to, no, no, I, they got that creative mind and they want to try, great Pathway. I kind of, my feeling is, I think there's a lot of good stuff here that why limit ourselves and let the help, let the developer and the project be guided to a pathway that fits both the needs of the subarea as well as their needs, and it allows them either the flexibility to have a demonstrative project or a hard and fast rules project. That's just kind of my feeling right now, just with your presentation and what I'm reading here, just like, you know, there's, let's not pigeonhole people into things. Let's give the flexibility to achieve what we want in the long run, but also giving them the flexibility to get what they want in the long run, too. So that's just my thought.
Appreciate that.
So Councilmember Doerr asked the question, what kind of feedback did you get? So which route does SAVE like? Which route does the, do the homeowners like?
I'm going to, so we all broke into a group, and I can speak generally about what my, my group wanted. And I can tell you that there is not a unified homeowner group preference. I believe that there are some people that have houses in the existing R4, 40,000 zoning who, you know, basically, you know, want things kind of to stay the way they are. They bought in that zone, they want that kind of thing. There certainly are people, particularly in the zone one areas, that, you know, want them, want a solution to their situation, which is that, you know, this is a complex thing, and they're not feeling like there's a pathway, it's a bad word, a option moving forward, and they want the one that, you know, gets them there. I don't think there's a preference, but they do underline, there's a issue that's keeping people from, you know, purchasing their projects and property, and they want to sell it, and they want that option. I think those probably tend to the more demonstrative, excuse me, prescriptive options because it allows the highest densities like we were talking about on paper. But I don't think there was a unified block in the existing house owners. What was the, the general, this is the official, I'm going to yell that for saying something wrong.
I feel that I went to say something. Well, the, everything Ben said absolutely, and it, the property owners themselves are not, you know, unified in their desires. Ben said it well. I think that the public hearings, now that folks have had a chance to digest this and consult the references, I think you're going to hear some more clear preferences and feedback at the, one and possibly two upcoming hearings. So I'll be watching them and listening on TV because I'll be fascinated. But I think we'll get some good feedback in the coming weeks as people sit with this and have the chance to consult their developers as well.
Yeah.
But, and, you know, you'll hear, too, I hope, from members of SAVE directly as well. And I wouldn't venture to speak for anybody. They really did want some more time.
So some of your questions that you asked, I thought were interesting. Do you want a creative solution? Do you want a clear solution? I want both. Why can't you have a creative, clear solution? Like rain gardens and boughs whales, that's creative.
Okay.
And it will be very clear. That is an option for you.
That's right.
So your questions, I don't know how you...
We were trying to pull out, it was scaled, so strongly favor, favor, or in the middle. But that is, we're just trying to pull it up.
Because there was one question at the beginning of it where you asked, and sorry, I cut you off. Finish that question and then I have it.
Nope, it's you.
Okay. At the beginning, you asked a question, and then ultimately, there was a second question. Then you could choose A or B. Like, do you want to build a home or protect the environment? Well, yes, both. It's possible in both.
That was C. They did, we'd have an A and B on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what I'm hoping is there's, I still feel like there's a couple paths that are still winding together. Are you going to bring back to us a very clear option?
I think so.
A creative, clear option?
This would probably go to staff, but after the hearings, from what I understand, is they'll look for your direction to parametrics to do the gap analysis on one or more of the options, and then they will work with staff to bring forward. I believe it's in, what month? July. Yet, and so you'll close it in July, the direction that staff recommends taking to write the code, and then you'll see the code in October.
Okay.
Have you got that right?
If I could just point out one thing.
Yeah, please.
That we can also, so we package these together, you could have clear and creative solutions easier for some elements than others. So again, if you're looking to say, well, you know, we like the confidence that these elements give us, but we would like, we would direct you to look for more clear, or more creative, yet still clear, options for this particular element, that, you know, that would be valuable feedback because then we can focus on those.
See, this seems like an amazing opportunity, right? There are multiple groups at the table with multiple different opinions that so far aren't hurting each other. You know what I mean? They're sitting around tables. That's a positive thing. Can we come back with something that could be a model that is doable, that still satisfies all sides? Maybe that's not possible, but ultimately, I agree, believe that you hold on more side of the property owner than the one paying taxes because they own the land. If we don't get to that point, maybe this is an opportunity to buy open space because we value that as a city, right?
Well, and there's, just to bring up, there's a couple, which we talked about earlier. I mean, there's other options which are not best-of-all-science or regulatory necessary options, but you could do transfer development credits.
TDRs are wonderful.
There's issues with that and administrative overhead and difficulties, but that, this is a classic situation that that program is developed for, where you have an area with a high-level sensitivity, you still want to develop density in your city, and you want to have a way to equitably transfer some of those, and that would be a program and which would be a separate process from what we're doing, but would be an option.
Perfect. One last thought for you. Bothell loves roads. We really do. We love wide roads. We love many of them. We like to have them everywhere throughout our city. Maybe there's an opportunity here to address our road requirements, which are onerous. We have one of the largest cul-de-sac widths around. We like to make sure that all our fire apparatus can get through, which is a positive, but also we don't need as wide as required. I know in our Green PUD, we offer some flexibility there. Maybe there's a greater opportunity to say, you know, we value the environment, we value the pedestrian experience rather than this onus of requirement for the car.
I think that's excellent, excellent points.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, over time. I just have a couple comments. So I'm honestly, so I do this as a profession, I'm a, I do stormwater management professionally, and I'm more confused now than I was before this meeting. And so I'm going to set up an appointment with Bruce Blackburn, if that's okay, and probably your boss, and try to get my head around what it is you were trying to do here. I think the intent was to simplify the regulations because that's what we heard going into the first amendment that we did that was repealed by the Growth Management Hearing Board. And to me, I mean, if we have multiple pathways and all this other stuff, it just seems like we actually are going to, we're proposing to complicate things. At least that's the way I'm seeing it from here. And to me personally, I think what we heard from the property owners is they need some clear value in their property. They currently have a zoning that they cannot sell their property, they can't get a value for their property, and it needs to be fixed. And so, I mean, looking at this, it seems like we're actually just going to make it worse, in my opinion. And so anyhow, I'm just going to leave it at that. I don't have any recommendation for which pathway. I think prescriptive makes more sense, but I don't know for sure just from kind of looking at this table and hearing your presentation. So thank you for coming in tonight, and I'll probably have a lot more to say next time you guys come next week.
Right.
Is there anybody else that didn't have a chance to talk that wants to talk? Okay. Moving on to AB 16-101, study session regarding the regular three-year update to the state building code. And we have Frank Shasky, the deputy fire chief, and Mike Delak to provide a presentation.
Huh? Back one? Ah, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Frank Shasky, deputy chief, fire marshal for the city of Bothell. And we also have Mike Delak, deputy director of community development. And this is the three-year cycle, our code update. I won the coin toss this cycle, so I get to present to council. I have before you proposed 2015 state building code adoption with local amendments. Excuse me, and let me get on my PowerPoint here for you. The revised code of Washington... code. Together, the RCW and the WAC mandate state code enforcement by all local jurisdictions. The State of Washington adopts the updated International Code Council, or ICC's code, every three years, and that's what brings us here tonight. Local jurisdictions may adopt local amendments, provided that they are not less restrictive than the state code. And we have some that are proposed here tonight for you. What's before you now is a list of the codes. There are many of them. Some of the council members were noting tonight that there's an international swimming pool and spa code now. But this list of codes essentially creates what we refer to as the state code. So, anytime we're talking about the state code, this is what we're talking about. I'm going to talk about some significant local amendments. These are actually fire code proposed amendments. Deputy Director Delak will talk about some significant state code amendments. First of all, I'd like to say that there's quite a few housekeeping amendments to the municipal code that we're proposing. What we found, what I found, and I also saw this in Deputy Director Delak's amendments, is that we had a lot of redundant language in our Bothell Municipal Code. That code language was repeated, or actually adopted under the state code, and then we had redundant sections of code language. So, as you work through reviewing our proposed amendments, you're going to see, we have little text boxes, they're highlighted in light green for you, that explain why we're proposing amendments. And on many of these housekeeping amendments, you'll see a line with state code or adopted under the state code, something to that effect. But there was a fair amount of strike-through deletions, just because of what I'm calling BMC 20.8, subsection 9, this is our emergency responder radio coverage. First of all, this proposed code language is a collaborative effort with Zone 1 Fire Marshals. I had a question here a month or two ago from our police chief, where was this code language coming from? She was asking if we were modeled after Bellevue's emergency responder code language. In fact, Bellevue's been on lead for us in this collaborative effort to develop that language. There was some work done with a consultant group called StanTech. They gave us some information, and we've incorporated their recommendations into our proposed language. Effectively, what we're trying to attempt to do with our emergency responder radio coverage code is, number one, we intend to require in-building distributed antenna systems. There's one in this building, they're very expensive, but we only want to require them where they're absolutely needed. And so, there's a, four parameters, basically, occupied floors 30 feet or more below grade, that would be P3 in this building. Amendment intended to require, oh, excuse me, more than five stories high, this building is not. I don't know the square footage of this building, but 50,000 square feet is one of our parameters. And then the total basement greater than 10,000 square feet. So, all these things are just designed to hit some minimal triggers, where we believe that a building amplifier system or distributed antenna system, that expensive system, is absolutely required. The other thing that is part of that proposed language is simply to align with NFPA 1221. So, this is the standard of how you build one of these systems, and in our current language, there's built into that a fair amount of standards language. So, standards language doesn't really belong in code language, and so, we're working to remove that and leave it where it belongs, which is in the NFPA standard. The next thing that I'm proposing is carbon dioxide notification at the entrance to oxygen-deficient rooms. So, when you go to a restaurant nowadays, or tavern, or wherever, and they dispense soda pop, beer, ketchup, that product, all of those products are being pushed by carbon dioxide. Now, typically, in the past, we bought cylinders that compress carbon dioxide gas. Nowadays, we are buying liquefied carbon dioxide. What's the difference? Volume of the gas. So, in its liquid state, in the container that is being delivered to restaurants, or where these systems are being used, you're getting six times the amount of carbon dioxide in this container. And it's a fairly complicated system, got lots of pipes and valves and stuff, and they leak. And they have caused, over the past two, three years, and these systems are relatively new, four casualties nationwide, one fatality, two firefighters were involved, two firefighters were not one of the fatalities, or was not a fatality. The problem is that there's a doors that has the liquid carbon dioxide, and it's put in a room in the restaurant somewhere, and it's filled, and it leaks. And there's alarm system with it, but the alarm system is right next to the doors. It's not outside the room. And what happens is people walk into the room, into an oxygen-deficient atmosphere, the one fatality went down, nobody was there to help her. The other casualties actually went into this space, came back out, then collapsed, and there were people there to help them and take care of them, and they survived. But they all respond to an alarm that's happening in the room, where the tank is, where the doors is. And so, what I'm proposing is to put a notification device before you enter the room. It seems logical that, somebody would have thought of this before, but it's a new system, and they really haven't gotten there yet. So, simple code amendment and puts a warning device before you enter the room, not once you get in there. The next significant amendment to our building code is to delete hydrant location standards from the Bothell Municipal Code. So, we have hydrant location standards that worked very well out in the business park when we were building concrete tilt-ups. Those standards are not working very well in our urban environment. We've run into some other problems with the current code language we have for hydrant, fire hydrant locations. One of them being that if we follow the Bothell Municipal Code language, we don't have language that affords us the ability to prevent crossing a major arterial with our fire hose. So, on more than one development, we've been doing a land use review, looking at the existing hydrants, and looking at the best location to put one in case we are going to go fight fire in a new development, and realized that because the hydrant across the street on a road like 228th actually met the distance standard in the Bothell Municipal Code. And without any other language, we can't require a hydrant to be on the other side, which means to, if we go fight fire in this development, we're going to lay a fire hose across 228th. This becomes a problem. Depending on time of day, definitely, and depending on how long that hose is going to be laying on the road, we're going to block a significant amount of traffic. I'm proposing to adopt International Fire Code Appendix C. That is the location and distribution of fire hydrants language in the International Fire Code. Appendix C expands and contracts with development density. So, in the urban environment, where there's denser development, you're going to have hydrant space closer together. I think the shortest distance is 250 feet. When you get out into a rural area, like we were just talking about the Fitzgerald SubArea, there, the hydrants would be spread out further. Less dense development equates to hydrant spaced out further apart. And that makes sense, you know, when you think about it from a developer's point of view. Also makes sense from a fire department point of view, we expect in a rural area that we're going to be making longer hose lays and not having the kind of water supply that we would in a downtown environment. So, those are the three significant amendments that I have for the building code. I'm going to turn this over now to Deputy Director Mike Delak, and he can speak on three more significant changes.
Thank you, Frank. So, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Unlike Deputy Mayor, or Deputy Chief Shasky, we're not proposing any significant changes to the building codes. Would like to reflect back, though, that the codes that Frank enumerated that are now the state building code is now expanded to 10 codes, whereas just a few years ago, I think it was a total of four codes. So, the significant changes really are just that the existing building code is now an adopted code in the State of Washington, and there was an email I sent out to council this afternoon answering the deputy mayor's question. The international swimming pool and spa code is now another code that's a standalone code. Previously, we had regulations in the building code and the residential code that addressed things like pool barriers and spa barriers. Now, there's an actual standalone code that does that. And then another one that kind of piqued my interest a little bit is the design wind speed for a region has increased from 85 miles per hour to 110. If you go through the actual engineering of it and apply it, the changes are very minimal to the design, but they've just decided to increase our wind speed in this region. So, that was, those were the only changes, and again, those are just state codes, there's no proposed local amendments that are being made. So, with that, if the council had any questions or any direction for us?
Any questions from council or direction? Councilmember Freed?
Section, I think, 20.02.7, I think it was the plumbing code. Why don't we allow studer vents in the City of Bothell?
Because the state plumbing code doesn't. Now, there's a, the International Plumbing Code, which the state does not adopt, does allow studer vents to be used. The Uniform Plumbing Code, which is the state plumbing code, does not. And we have tried numerous times through Wabo to get the legislature to open that back up and allow the adoption of the IPC. For whatever reason, the plumbers' unions have not been in favor of that, even though my understanding is now they test on both the Uniform Plumbing Code and the International Plumbing Code. There's a reluctance from the plumbers' union and the pipe fitters' union to adopt the IPC. I don't know why that is, but we can't, we've even proposed adopting the IPC as an approved alternate method, and have been told by the State Building Council that's not allowed, that would be contrary to the state law as well.
I mean, I can understand on new construction, there's more flexibility, but it seems with remodels, it's really an issue that we should try to allow it, but I guess for adopting the state, it makes it difficult, because often in the old homes throughout Bothell, I don't know what percentage, but a very large percentage don't have adequate venting. And if we could allow for studer vents to be used in a remodel without having to go up through the roof through a floor or two, that would improve the situation overall.
And just to clarify, we do consider those requests. The difference, the difference is, we can't just say, we'll accept studer vents, or we will accept the IPC as an approved alternate. Each individual specific case has to be brought forward and requested.
We will allow it, but it's under your...
Under certain circumstances, right.
Okay. And then the other is, we would like to be a city that encourages installation of sprinklers. I went to a fire, the fire chief down in Redmond held an event, which was very interesting, invited a lot of people, a lot of firefighters and builders and such, trying to find ways that we could encourage the installation of sprinklers, even where they're not required. Do we have any focus on that as a city?
I'll ask the deputy chief.
Currently, we use residential sprinklers as mitigation for when a developer or development cannot meet our requirements, our standards. So, typically, for fire that will involve either a fire apparatus access issue, either the road is configured in a way that just doesn't meet our standards, or there is a water flow issue, there's not enough water in the water main to provide for adequate fire protection. So, then we say, well, if you want to build, we'll allow you to move forward, even though you're not meeting our standards, provided that you install a residential fire sprinkler system.
And I guess my question would be, if there's a, somebody building a home, they just want to have fire sprinklers as part of their house, it's not a requirement, we as a city cannot requirement, do we, can we offer to waive the fee? Can we offer expedited review? Like, are there ways that we can encourage people who actually want to have fire sprinklers where it's not required to otherwise incentivize them to install it? You follow what I'm saying?
Well, I would like to find ways to encourage residential fire sprinklers. I think they're, they're good. We have had a successful extinguishment of fires that in development that had the fire got away, would have exposed more buildings, clearly.
Yeah. I want to be sensitive at the time, I just looked at the clock. Maybe I could follow up with you. I think as a city, if we can find some ways to incentivize or encourage them where they're not even required, it probably would benefit us as a whole.
More than being used as mitigation, no, we do not at this time.
Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember McNeil?
I will tack on to Councilmember Freed's comments, that I do know that other jurisdictions do require sprinklers based on square footage.
So, our sprinkler threshold is 6,000 square feet, 5,000 for educational, but there's exception to single-family, actually, it's one and two-family development.
So, I think in Bellevue was the last one that I got, they required it, I believe, over 5,000 square feet, which also includes overhangs, if I'm not mistaken. So, it may be a way to take a look at that, to possibly, because I know it is a safety thing, it really would help to have that requirement based on square footage as well, especially since a lot of the homes are becoming much larger now in our community, and a lot of them are hills, being built on hillsides and things like that, that are going to be harder for you guys to get to. So, I agree with the Councilmember Freed, and I think we should definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, all those things are true, and currently, we are looking at a house that is over 6,000 square feet. But we do have the exception, so sprinkler is not required based on square feet.
Any more questions, comments? Building code's always a fascinating topic for a lot of councilmembers. Thank you for being on top of the building code and the fire code, because, boy, it's hard to follow. So, appreciate it. I need a motion to extend the meeting?
Move to extend to 10:15.
It's moved by Councilmember Sandberg, second by Councilmember McNeil to extend to, did you say 10:15? Wow. Are we ready to vote on that? Can we vote on that with the buttons? Okay. Passes unanimously, so we're scheduled till 10:15. The next agenda item is AB 16-102, study session regarding the website improvement plan. And this is our Public Information Officer, Barbara Ramey, is here.
Thank you so much. I was going to start out saying I'm excited to be here, but at 10 to 10, actually, I am still excited to be here. This is my first time before you as Communications Officer and Mayor and Deputy Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to share some good news that is not too complicated, and you don't have to make any decisions. How's that? And this is our Public Information Officer, Barbara Ramey, is here.
Thank you so much. I was going to start out saying I'm excited to be here, but at 10 to 10, actually, I am still excited to be here. This is my first time before you as Communications Officer and Mayor and Deputy Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm excited to share some good news that is not too complicated and you don't have to make any decisions. How's that? The city is going to be launching a brand-new website later this week. And I'm going to give you a sneak peek tonight. But before I do that, I want to give you a little bit of background on the project. First of all, the most important point I want to make tonight is that our website was designed with citizen input, and it's for the citizens, aim to improve public engagement. The current website was first launched about 10 years ago, and one of the questions in my job interview for this job was, what do you think about the website? So I guess I answered that correctly. The website was, was last updated in 2008, is long due for an overhaul. The last, or the site is not optimized for mobile devices. And what that means is, when you're using a smartphone or a tablet, it's really hard to see. You've probably experienced that. It's no longer easy for residents and others to use. And the content management system, which is what staff use to update the site, is really clunky. It's just, it's hard to use. It lacks modern functionality, and sometimes it just fails. So, before I was even hired for this job, this groundwork was laid for this project. Six months after we selected the vent, basically, we had a very short timeline for this project, six months from contract to launch. The process included reviewing all content on the current site, deleting a lot of old outdated information, creating new content, and then significant staff training. We have at least 20 members of staff who currently add content to our website. It's a very decentralized system. So, we had three days of staff training on the new content management system. We also had one day of web writing training for about 20 staff members. The new website, which I will show you in a moment, has about 500 pages and more than 4,000 elements. And what that means is different modules, like calendars, news modules, blogs, images, et cetera. So, there's, there's a lot of work that's been put into this. So before I unveil the new site, I really want to give some thank yous. And with me, I have Michelle Woodhouse, who has been my co-lead on this project. Without Michelle, I couldn't have done this. We, we have complementary skills, and Michelle has been a really good team player. Also, there was basically a web leadership team that was formed. I'm the lead, Michelle's my co-lead, and then three members from different departments joined us. So it's a real interdepartmental effort. Kirsten Clemens from the Fire Department, Kristy Cox, who I really want to give a major shout out to, and Aaron's not here anymore, but Kristy has been a fabulous team player on this, and Catherine Jansen also did quite a bit of work. So, the web leadership team worked on this project as well with the larger Bothell Online Team that was chartered in 2014 under the leadership of Assistant City Manager Peter Troodsen. That team was basically formed to provide guidance to this project. So we hired Civic Plus to be our website developer. We awarded them the contract, I'm trying to remember exactly when it was, but late last year. So I have a bit of information about Civic Plus, but in the interest of time, I think I'm going to just skip over that. I mentioned public engagement. We did a survey early on to find out about the needs for this project, what the public wanted in a new website. And then, back in early May, we conducted web usability testing, and we invited members of the public to come into City Hall and help us out. We had 25 people who volunteered to come in on their own time and sit here for an hour and a half testing our website. So I want to give a big shout out to all those people who helped us out. Feedback from the testing helped us modify the site. We modified the navigation based on their input. We also modified the design based on their input. So their input was very critical. So, drumroll, please. I'm going to segue from the old site to the new site. This site is what people will see when it goes live, and I'll explain a little bit about the timeline later. But I want to emphasize that this is a customer-focused website. It's got improved navigation. It's got a lot of new, modern features, which I can walk you through a little bit, depending on how much time you want to spend on this. But from online forms and subscriptions to a get-involved page where people can easily find out how to volunteer or serve on a board and commission, we're making, making it easier for citizens to participate in their government. The other important aspect of this site is that it is responsive, meaning when you use your smartphone to look at the website, it's going to be a lot easier. The site automatically formats so that it'll, so that it's easy to read on phones and tablets. And this is increasingly important as more and more residents have a smartphone. And studies have also shown that lower-income residents may use a smartphone as their only internet connection. So moving to a responsive site is really important. The other point I wanted to make is that the site does have many capabilities that we're not quite ready for yet, but the fact that they have these capabilities is really important. For example, online bill pay. We don't currently have online bill pay. The new site has that capability, and staff are investigating options for the best way to implement online bill pay, once we're able to upgrade our finance system. One other point I want to make is that the site will be hosted externally in different geographic locations. And what that means is if we suffer the 9.0 earthquake, our website is still going to be up because it's hosted in another state. So that's going to be very helpful in that instance. The other thing I almost forgot to mention, and thankfully, Michelle and I were talking earlier, and she reminded me of this, is that we get a free redesign in four years. So Civic Plus basically is going to work with us four years from, I think from when we signed the contract, to, to freshen the site up. So, quickly, just to go over the launch date and the transition and what to expect. Tomorrow, tomorrow night, Wednesday night, where we will have a planned, planned website outage. That is to start transitioning the old site to the new site. And then, the new site will start coming up. It takes 24 to 48 hours to transition to the new website. And I can't explain all the technical stuff that goes on, but there's, there's all sorts of things that happen in the background. The web address is going to stay the same, so it's bothellwa.gov, just like it is now. And just one final note, that a website is an evolving project. So although we're very excited about the launch, a website is never really done. Our web team is going to keep meeting. We're going to keep working on things. And there's a few things with the design that hopefully will be done by end of day tomorrow. So there's a few little tweaks with the design that Civic Plus is still making, so the, the actual design isn't final at this time. But we do have, let me just take, give you a real quick tour. So there's these slideshow photos on the homepage, which you can click on, and I, I won't, just in the interest of time. But you can click on them, and they go to a page that gives you more information. And the idea is this is kind of promoting neat events or activities or programs that are going on in the city. And then, as you scroll down, you can see some additional navigation elements in the screen bar. And I neglected to show you the navigation at the top. There's Your Government, City Services, Doing Business, Explore Bothell, and How Do I. And again, we worked really hard with folks who came to the web usability to make sure that this navigation worked for them. And you can sort of explore this at your leisure when the site is live in a couple of days. But again, in the green bar, there's this notify me icon. And what that is, is residents can click on that and sign up for any number of, of their subscriptions, basically. There's a number of calendars, and if people subscribe, they can be notified whenever a calendar is updated. So if, for example, people want to know whenever the city council agenda is live, they can sign up for that. They could sign up to find out parks, events, things like that. Permits, pretty self-explanatory. Parks and Recreation just goes to the Parks and Recreation page. Public Records requests are increasingly popular. So we made that really easy to find. And then, a link to jobs. Down here, we've got News Flash that's actually going to be retitled Bothell News, which is where we're going to put things that might otherwise be press releases or, or major announcements, things that we want to draw people's attention to. And on this Tell Us What You Think About the New Website, we have a web feedback form, so that people can give us comments, and we can keep improving based on citizen input. And then the calendar is much better than our existing website. As you may be aware, the existing website doesn't actually have a calendar. It's a list. And this has an actual calendar that's divided up between meetings and events, so people can easily click on that and find what they're looking for. So that is a super-fast tour. Oh, down at the bottom, I almost forgot. There's four additional boxes, Construction Projects, Passports. That's one of the things we've heard from people that they can't find on our current site. So we made passports really easy to find. Animal Services and Emergency Preparedness. So again, that is a super-fast tour in the respect of your time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That's a fabulous update to our city website. Thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments, council? Councilmember Freed?
That's really cool. Can you go to Your Government and then City Council? And then click on toward the bottom? Any one of our names? Mine, sure, why not? And you go, see on the left, it says Legal Stuff, Layout 2, Layout 3?
Yeah, that's not going to be there.
Oh, alright, alright.
Like I said, there's a few design things that are, the Civic Plus is still tweaking. So, that won't be there.
It looks awesome.
But, and just so you know, there is a staff directory, and that's kind of what powers a lot of this kind of stuff. Although you guys aren't staffed, but you're, you're still listed in the staff directory because that's how it functions. So your pictures pop up automatically.
Alright, change it quick. Thank you very much. Nice work.
Thank you.
So just real quick, there was a email all council button that we had put on our website. Is that going to be moving forward? Is it still there?
Good question. It may not be, but we can put it back. There, as you can imagine, this website project was a huge undertaking. So there might be little things like that that fell off, and that's easy to put back.
Okay, great. Is there any other questions? Great, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, we can't take, I know it's awkward. Can we talk to you after the meeting? Is that okay? We're almost done. We're almost done. Is there an executive session tonight? There is an executive session. Oh, okay.
Shouldn't take more than five minutes.
Do you anticipate us to come back and take action after the, okay? Is there any council committee reports that we want to do tonight? No? Okay. So we will, what's that? Oh, there's a council committee report. So I guess we need to extend the meeting and then come back. Or do you want to do the council committee report right now?
Extend to 10:30.
Motion's made to extend to 10:30 by councilmember Sandberg, seconded by councilmember Freed. Was that? Let's vote on it. Passes 6 to 1 with customers probably being the negative. We're going to be in executive session for five minutes and then come back up. Alright, City Council is back in session. We have a, we're back from executive session, sorry. We have a committee report from the Deputy Mayor, and we're done?
I have three. I wanted to just let everyone know that at our ETP meeting this month, we submitted a comment letter on Metro's long-range plan, and Eastside Cities have asked for more interconnectedness and integrating of the transit system. And then, at the Snohomish County Steering Committee, we are approving the ICC recommended project priority list for 2016, and there are two Bothell projects on that list, the 228 Street Overlay and the North Creek Trail Section 4. And then, one last thing. Deputy Chief, Henry Simon and I attended the Snohomish County Public Safety and Human Services Alliance meeting on June 3, and basically, we had a discussion about the interconnectedness between homelessness, and opioid, and heroin addiction, and some of the programs that they've put in place to try to move repeat offenders from the criminal justice side of government to human services. And so, they talked about some of the programs that they have in place, so if anyone has questions, feel free to reach out, and I'll give them more detail.
Great. In the last five minutes, do we have any more committee reports? Seeing none, do we have a motion adjourned?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Deputy Mayor Duer, and we had, damn, they work, okay. Pleasure. Oh, Councilmember Sandberg is not here. Just go. Alright, passes 6 to 6 with Councilmember Sandberg absent and excused, we are adjourned.
I'm here, yay.